West blow and they temporarily raise the water levels. That's going to remain an issue for quite some time. So unless there's questions on that, I'll turn it over to Daryl.
Okay, great. Thank you. Daryl?
Yes, met out on site with Scott Herbert and Jeff Yocum from the Army Corps. And we walked all the sites of concern and we discussed some options. We've discussed other things that the Army Corps has seen in other communities. Discuss what I've seen, what we've done in some of our communities, City of South Haven, Benton Harbor. Just not a lot of great ideas, a lot of just really basic stuff. And it's basically what you guys are doing currently. That's the sandbags and pump out system. We just want to look at a little closer, check out elevations of the river. And during certain events on what elevations those are going to be and how that impacts your downtown. And then, of course, it's what type of pump system do you want to have installed? And there's always the temporary pumps, you know, right now you're working with some pumps. You could use bigger pumps, but again, that's just bigger cost. And and we'll spell that out for you guys, give you several options and some costs associated with those. And you guys can make the call on how you'd like to proceed.
You'll see multiple options with your sandbags, different types of temporary dam structures, up to just some basic concepts for a permanent solution. So if you decided that, hey, this is a scenario that is going to be an issue well into the future. You know, what does a lift station look like and those sorts of costs? Which we're not going to go into tremendous detail on it, but enough to give you a sense of, you know, hey, is this is this an area that might might be considered for a more permanent solution? But I think most of your most of your situations are are really directly related to the water levels. And and give us a year or two and that water comes back down, you won't be facing them anymore with any luck.
And then, yes, we'll have another cycle to bring you back in in five years from now.
We'll be talking dredging.
Any any questions from council?
I have a question. I do.
Okay, there you are, Holly. Thank you. I can't see everybody on the screen, so just when you raise your hand, identify yourself and I'll recognize you.
Okay, will do, Ken. Gentlemen, you said the records are being hit as expected. Are we pretty much tracking, where are we in terms of the Army Corps?
We are tracking right on their projection as it stands. If you'd like, I could show the current one today if you want to see it. Let me just do that really quickly. You'd have to you'd have to give me permission to do that if you want. But basically, we are tracking right on their projection. So we set a new high last month. We set a new high in February. I am certain we're going to set a new high in April because we're already well above it, probably six inches above on average. I've been looking at the weather forecast. We're looking at probably two inches of rain over the next week. So no question that the predicted patterns that wet spring is seems to be holding so far. So I will, I will be very, very surprised if we're not setting records all summer. The projection is to only be about three, three to four inches above last year's record high. But that was pretty darn high.
I don't see your sheet yet.
Oh, you want me to share? There we go. Hang on. It's the host is disabled it. So Kirk, you're going to have to give me permission to do that.
So what what can we tell our folks along the river? Do they, do we need to sand, do we need to be sandbagging now? Is there kind of a D-Day date? Is there sort of a range that you're looking at where it gets close to the top of the seawall?
We we could provide that information in more detail if need be. So I'm going to do this real quickly. All right, one second. Sorry. All right, can you see the the chart now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to try to make it just a little bigger. See if that will work for me. There we go. So as we looked at last time, I don't know if my mouse is going to work there, it comes. So this red line is the actual, so this is January of 2020, February of 2020, March and so on. So we're right here. So the previous record high was in 1987 in January. We beat that by a solid four inches. We're about six inches above in February and back about four inches above in March. We're in that same kind of tracking all the way through. So we're above here and so forth. So last summer's record high, we expect to hit, last summer in July, we peaked out right here at what we call four point, oops, I'm sorry. We peaked out right here at elevation about 4.4. And we expect to hit that same elevation as as that in mid-May. So what you could tell folks is that if whatever they encountered last July is what they can expect to encounter come May. And then they can expect to be about four inches to five inches higher than that in June and July, before it's projected to start to to drop off. This is updated every month and I can share this with you every month so you can provide continued updates.
I have a question.
Chris?
Chris.
Was that Chris?
It's Chris, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Before we actually worked with Greg, we had talked about that John Shar had offered us a pump. And we had talked about putting that in someplace, either there at the end of Butler. Or where are we at on doing any of that? Remember, John Shar said you could have this pump. I have it.
Scott, if you want to comment on that.
So as far as the flooding goes down there, you know, we haven't, we haven't seen, we haven't gotten a lot of direction since the last meeting. So, you know, we're waiting for that that report back from Edgewater and seeing what they, based on what their recommendations are. You know, last thing that we want to do is cause some unintended flooding somewhere else. You know, and I think that we're all, it's it's just one of those plans that it seems like to me, it's either all in or it's it's going to be really hard to to have a successful effort without having the participation of everyone involved. That's kind of what Daryl and Jeff and I, when we were going around looking at these individual properties, that's what we determined. So, you know, I'm going to have to divert that a little bit back to Edgewater on that.
I wasn't aware of this pump. Is that something we could get more information to Daryl on and he can see how that might factor in?
I think I'm remembering correctly that John Shar said he had bought one and we could use it. Now, it's
You know, it's just, it's another sump pump. Basically, the same exact thing that is already in place down there at the intersection of Water Lucy Street. You know, I think they're around 5,000 gallon per minute pumps. And I think that's what John was saying that he had that he could contribute to.
Perfect.
But you'd also need to have a pit for it to, you know, so you'd have to punch a hole in the street somewhere else and and use that as a sump pit for the pump too.
And that's what we want to get back in with those options is, you know, is there a structure available? Do we need to, like you just said, Scott, punch a hole in the street or, you know, because you currently have that in some of the low spots. I know over there by Spear Street, I think, you've got that one little spot by those two small houses. You've got that sump pump and the pipes pumping towards the river.
Yeah, and it's working, you know, and just to add one more pump, I think the real benefit is just going to be, you know, when we do get these storm surges, or if we get flooding up on the street, that the real benefit to adding one more sump pump of that size, you know, a fairly small pump is just going to be a small amount of time that 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 the water is removed off the street.
And it's good to have that backup.
Talking to police about, also, we talked to police about pumps in particular, right, Chris?
Yeah.
So They're going to get back to us.
And it was also to do with the end of Butler Street too. I think that's maybe where the pump, we had talked about putting the pump because there was nothing at the end of Butler Street.
Correct.
Yes, we we talked to the to police and Van De Brink, our city engineers came up with some preliminary ideas. And then council engaged Edgewater to kind of evaluate these ideas a little bit further. So that's what that's what the next step is right now. The Edgewater is going to come up with kind of a a list of recommendations and a strategy. So I've I've supplied all that information that police has prepared. And Greg and Daryl at Edgewater has that information. So they're putting all that into their report.
Okay.
When will we get that report? When, sorry?
We'll have a draft next week.
Okay, thank you.
You maybe just answered my question, Greg. When is the report due?
We'll have the the draft for internal review next week.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, Park Street North Reviving Project Update. John, are you here?
Yep, let me get him set here. Hold on. John, you're live.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Good evening, good afternoon. Um, yeah, quick, quick update on where we stand with Park Street. And I guess skipping to the to the end, the ball's kind of in your court on what we do in terms of schedule. MDOT has kind of gone around and around on how they've handled their construction projects. They started with a very hard stance deeming all of their projects essential. The the contractors lobby was starting to get pressure from their employees not wanting to work. And so they put pressure on the governor. And now MDOT's stance is that they're letting contractors decide whether their project is essential or not, essentially. They're not making the determination, but they're letting the contractors tell them whether they're going to work or not. So we've seen some projects move forward. We've seen some projects that are suspended for for weeks or indefinitely. And we've seen some projects that are just been delayed. We've talked to Crown Excavating. Their original position was that they would rather wait and do the project later. They do have an opening in their schedule. They've had other projects that have been delayed for for these reasons. So they do have an opening in their schedule that if we give them the go ahead in the near future, they could, they could still do the project this spring. But they're okay doing it in the fall as well. We've told them already that summer is no go. So they're, if if we don't do it this spring, it would either be in the fall or the following spring potentially even. And and that's really your decision as a board, whether you want to deem this an essential project or not. You've got good legal standing either way in as much as as I've been following the the legal discussions on this. It's really a matter of of your preference and and your comfort level on having the work going on. Everyone on site, you know, will have all the precautionary measures, the the personal protective equipment, social distancing. There are a whole different set of standards for social distancing on construction sites that everybody's getting familiar with. Our site folks, you know, are well trained in that now, well versed in that. We've, we've been doing fieldwork pretty much since all of this broke loose and refining our processes. So that's kind of where we stand is is looking for some direction, I guess, on on council, whether whether you would like to see this project move forward in the spring or whether we want to move it to the fall is is kind of the big question. And and from our standpoint, police and Van De Brink, we're perfectly comfortable doing it either way. It's it's really up to you folks.
Okay, any questions?
I've got a couple, Ken.
Chris?
No, go ahead, Mark.
Mark here. Okay, hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Hi, John. A couple of questions. One, what's the projected timeframe to complete the project if all went well? We're talking a week, two weeks, a month?
We're thinking closer to a month, yeah. Yep, I I will pull up what we actually gave them for schedule here while we talk. But we're we're thinking three to four weeks, I believe.
Okay. Do we have any, maybe Kirk or you, do we have any projects planned in the fall? Kirk?
At this time, we do not have any projects planned for the fall.
And when are the the batch plants opening up? Are they, have they opened early because of the good weather or?
I've heard rumors of some open already. But yeah, they they will probably be opening up here, everybody, in the next week or two.
Okay.
I do have
Okay, that's good enough for me.
Chris?
Hi, John. Just not knowing that much about how the how this always goes. Have you heard from any of the people that have started these projects? And then has anybody decided they don't want to do it because of the whole contamination issue? What would happen if we get partway into this and that would happen? Is it the kind of project that if we get partway into it and then we they stop, can we still move back and forth on that road?
Yeah, it's it's been across the board. There are some contractors that are eager to find projects they can put their people on. And there are others that are, you know, doing whatever they can to to close things down. So I've I've seen both. Our specific project is it lends itself to a shutdown. The worst case scenario is they they remove all the asphalt, start the grading work and decide they're not comfortable continuing. And then you're left with, you know, the millings, basically gravel and millings, which honestly isn't that much worse than what you've got today.
Thank you.
Just going back to schedule, we had originally given them a completion date of June 19 with final completion at June 26. But again, we we see it as being like a three to four week operation sometime between now and then.
Garnet?
Yeah, thanks, Ken. So just an observation, being up to my eyebrows in a construction project, I think we need to be cautious of the message that we'd be sending if if we move forward with a project like this right now. We have a lot of construction projects in the area that have basically been shut down. And the message that I think it's best that we wait till fall. That way, we don't risk starting a project and then having to stop it. I just, I think we need to be really careful about what we're saying to the other construction projects in the area.
Anyone else questions?
And if I can have the floor for a second?
Yes, Kirk.
The other thing to keep in mind with this project too is that this section of Park Street isn't necessarily a critical piece of infrastructure where if we don't get this road fixed this spring, that's going to prevent people from traveling on it or still getting to their properties. It's not like it's a major thoroughfare in or out of town. The other issue is we're kind of a little bit behind the eight ball, so to speak, because of the unforeseen issues with the COVID-19 situation. So we really haven't been able to keep the public updated as to a schedule that live in that area. So if we're going to do this, I would imagine we would probably start pretty quick. It's going to be difficult for us to get people notified of when we're going to start in the timeline. And also, we wanted to have a pre-construction meeting, which we could do online. But obviously, it's not as as good as being able to do it in person. So if the council were to take the position and wait until the fall, I don't see this being a critical project that's going to prevent anybody from getting to their properties or any other negative issues. So this one, I'd keep that in mind.
Yeah, I'm I'm inclined to agree with that as well for reasons Garnet stated that we're setting a precedent or or, you know, encouraging people who might not otherwise act to want to do projects because the city's doing it. And then there seems to be limited downside to waiting until fall. Chris, I think I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say, I agree. I don't consider it essential. And I think we should put it off to a better time.
Anyone else?
Ken, can I ask Kirk a question?
Holly, yeah.
Kirk, have you heard from any local residents on Park Street? Have you had any feedback? Have people said, hey, when is this starting? Or have you had any pushback at all?
I've had quite a few calls from people wondering when it's going to start because we've told people previously it was going to be in the spring. And I said, when we get ready, we would have a pre-construction meeting, we'd be sending out some notifications. So they've been contacting me, asking that specific question. And I said, we're in a holding pattern right now. So people are wondering what's going on. And again, my fear is if we just jump into this and do it now, we're, it's going to be difficult to really get people notified and get plans out and get questions answered.
And I know that that's sensitive, that's a sensitive issue is is the communications with those neighbors on Park Street. So I agree with Garn and the previous comments to wait.
Anyone else?
I I also agree with comments. Thank you, Garnet. And Ken, this is not critical and we should put it off till the fall.
What about the fact, I'm not sure that we should be spending money right now. I mean, we don't know when this is going to end. We don't know, don't know anything. So maybe this isn't the best time in the world to spend money. And putting it off till the fall would probably be best in the in the long view anyway.
Good point.
Yeah, I have a question for John.
Yeah, go ahead.
The cost factor. How long are they, are we locked in with the bid with them? So let's say we go to fall. The bid is the same. And if for some reason we go out to next spring, just help me out. We would have to rebid it out? Question.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question. Right now, the way we would do it contractually is we would issue a time extension for that. It's so that goes in a change order. And that would be their opportunity to, if if they wanted to ask for an adjustment in their cost, that would be the opportunity for them to do that. I actually think it's probably going to be less costly for them to do it in the fall. You've you've seen what happened to gas prices. Asphalt is is kind of following suit. So the material cost has certainly gone down from the time they bid it. So I guess I'm not anticipating that they would request, and they haven't mentioned that. When we talked to them about doing it in the fall, they they never even mentioned cost. So I I guess I wouldn't anticipate it, but there would be that opportunity for them to do that, I suppose. And and certainly, we could rebid it if if we wanted to. Or we could just, you know, if they're willing to hold their numbers, we just hold their numbers and and just delay the project. Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Mark, you haven't weighed in on this yet, I don't think.
I had a couple of questions at the start. Yeah, I don't have any problem delaying it either to the fall or or next year, understanding that there could be some, you know, impact on pricing. It may go the other way, you know, there may be more bidders. Well, that is if we have to rebid the whole project I'm talking about, not with, unless Crown plays ball with us. We're substantially less than everybody else, if I remember right.
Yeah, we did get very, we got a very good bid from them. So I guess I wouldn't go to rebid unless unless we go into the next spring perhaps. But if they're willing to hold their prices, I I think it's pretty straightforward. We can just extend the contract form.
Thanks, Ken. I'm comfortable with that.
Any other questions or comments in this one? Okay, then we'll move along to the next item is the Soccer Tech Department Public Works Spring Operations Update. Scott, are you there?
I'm here, Ken. Yeah, so, you know, without knowing what the summer is going to unfold and look like, we're really, we're really just going at it with with a couple of goals. You know, one is we want town obviously to look as good as possible so that a lot of the local businesses and store owners can salvage as much of of an income as possible if it gets to that point. You know, we don't know for sure what it'll look like or when this will let up. So we're going to continue to to do what we can to keep town looking its very best. But we can't do that without first keeping employees safe. So we've implemented, Kirk and I have worked together to implement some steps to be taken up at the Public Works Garage to ensure that. John, you mentioned that some of the policies are changing on construction sites. I'd like to maybe compare notes sometime and see if there's something I can learn from from what you're uncovering. But what we're, what we've done so far is, you know, we'll be staggering employee starting times to try to minimize the human to human contact. Obviously, we're we're not trying to stay at the garage or the break rooms closed. That's not even a question. You know, we've assigned work trucks and tractors and fleet to individuals so that we're not hopping in the same pieces of equipment as one another. We're we're keeping our own germs to ourselves as much as possible. You know, we're taking all the recommendations from the state level, the health department, by regularly disinfecting surfaces, practicing personal hygiene, washing our hands, not trying to touch our face, practicing social distancing, like everybody. We're trying to minimize dealings with the public. You know, whatever work can be conducted by email or phone or Zoom. You know, we want to encourage that versus the human to human contact. There's no public that's allowed into the garage at this time. And then, you know, I'm continuing to monitor the employees for symptoms. And if anyone starts to show symptoms, they're, they can't come to work. And then also, I can't tell employees what to do outside of work, but all I can do is beg and plead with them and encourage them to make smart behaviors in their personal lives. But, you know, one thing that I did a while back, a few weeks ago, in, well, probably over a month ago now, in anticipation of the the craze that people are seeing at the grocery stores and stuff, is I've ordered a lot of supplies ahead of time, especially toilet paper, which is like gold right now, trash bags, hand soaps, disinfectant sprays, that type of stuff. So we're really, really well stocked as far as that stuff goes. PPE, rubber gloves, working on trying to get some masks for employees. So we have to take these steps to try to keep our employees safe. And as long as we're able to do that and maintain it, you know, we want to, we want to work hard and do what we can to keep town looking good. And unfortunately for us, you know, Public Works is considered, you know, essential, according to the governor. So we want to, we want to stay at it as long as we can. And and we'll, a lot of the work that we do, it doesn't require us to be working alongside each other. In fact, most of it doesn't require that. So I'm confident that we can keep employees safe while still doing things. You know, next week, we have brush and leaf collection. You know, I'll be in my tractor in the backhoe all day long and, you know, the loader, etc. We don't need to be in contact with one another. You know, the backhoe is assigned to me and that's what I'll I'll be using. So, you know, we're able to provide that service to to residents still. And then after that, we were hoping to start removing some erosion control fence out at the Oval Beach next week because towards the end of the month, I've got the bulldozer scheduled to come in and level off the beach. So I, you know, it can always close the gate and close the beach down. But without knowing ahead of time what this is going to look like, I think it's important for, you know, until I'm staffed, I think it's important to operate as if there is going to be some degree of summer that these businesses can salvage. So, you know, a lot of the work that we're doing is revolving around the parks. The Oval Beach, we want to remove that fencing, you know, clean the parking lot, replenish the beach with sand, none of which requires human, you know, us to work near each other. We can do it independently. You know, and and also in the in the parks, we're we're at a point where we can do some some spring detailing in the parks to, you know, thatching and prepping and fertilizing flower beds. You know, the stuff that we really do need to keep up on this stuff. If we just let our parks go right now, I mean, with such a small staff and the large park system that we have, we'll never catch back up. So, you know, every year I order 100 yards of mulch. We're still planning on moving forward with that. And, you know, all the services that we typically do, as long as it doesn't jeopardize our health, we're going to continue to do those things. So.
Any questions? Thanks, yeah. Have you a projection about one that Butler Street Bathroom might open back up, the restrooms?
I I don't know. I think the governor was going to issue a statement at four o'clock today. So I don't know if she'll be extending the the shelter in place order or not. I believe she is.
It has been, Ken, it has, the shelter in place has been extended until April 30. So we're going to keep the restroom, the main public restroom closed until April 30 and then we'll reopen at that time.
Okay. Any other questions?
Kind of building on that about the the public restroom. Yeah, she just ordered it till April 30.
Getting this?
I guess we
As well.
Yeah. When do we usually open the restrooms? What what date?
The the main restrooms are always always open because there's a water heater and there's heat in that building. Mount Bald Head and the Oval Beach as well as Wix Park, it's it's different every year because of the weather. You know, they're calling for some unfavorable weather next week and for temperatures to drop. You know, so one day you'll see 70 degrees and You know, so one day you'll see 70 degrees and think, why aren't these open? Uh, and then Michigan happens. So it all, it all depends on the overall climate.
I would think they, I would think we keep them closed until April 30th for sure.
Yes.
Oh, for sure. But I wonder, would, uh, porta, portable toilets be, uh, exempt from that order? I mean, you go into them one at a time, right? Anybody?
Yes. Well, and that's what the reason that we put the porta potties at the main restroom is so we could give the public, did have some option to, um, use the restroom.
Should we think about doing that with the others? If we can't open the main restrooms?
Well, I mean, I guess the only other restrooms we'd have would be, um, the oval beach, which we don't open those usually until much later, I think. Wicks Park and Mount Bald Head would be the only other two that we, we potentially could put something out there. Um, so Scott, when do you normally open up the, um, Mount Bald Head and Wick's Park restroom?
If, if we, well, again, today, I, just a little bit ago, it was, it was snowing sideways at my house. So it all depends on the overall weather, but I would say, you know, sometime towards the end of April is a general, general timeframe.
So I think, I think if we wait till this April 30th, that's kind of the go-to date. I think after that we'll start getting things, everything back open again. So I don't really see the, they normally would be closed and probably till the end of April anyway. So putting Porta Johns in those facility, in those areas right now, especially Wick's Park, we have one at the main area. Mount Bald Head, we normally don't open that up till the end of April anyway. So I think we're in a good, good position, but we could always evaluate it.
Right now, but you know, come April 30th, if this gets extended anymore, we might think about doing that.
Ken, can I weigh in really quick? You know, but this is a good example of something that, you know, I think that we need to, as, as the city and the public works department specifically, you know, from our operation standpoint, we need to make it so that the restrooms are, you know, we, we want to turn the water on to the restrooms and have them ready to go. Um, so that when the order is lifted and we can open them up to the public, they're open, they're clean and they're, they're ready to go. So we want to continue working on these types of things.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions, Scott?
Ken?
Yes, Barry.
Uh, yes. What about the spring trash pickup? Are we going to bump that out to the fall or where are we at on that?
For junk collection week, that's a good question. Uh, we, we Kirk and I touched base on that, I think just yesterday, um, a little bit. And personally, uh, I, I don't want to touch all these household items. So I would be in favor of, of moving the date.
Yeah, I would also be in favor of moving the date. And the other aspect of that, it's a big, uh, big town, uh, you know, sale. And I put all my stuff out in the afternoon and by the morning half of it's gone. Which means their pickers are going through and they're touching everything as well. So I'd just soon get it all the way out to the fall.
Another option would be to have a dumpster at the garage and maybe this year, you know, if people want to do some spring cleanup uh, during the stay-at-home shelter, they can bring their stuff to the public works garage and, and, you know, we can, we can do, have staff simply check IDs or something to make sure that the residents are bringing the stuff there.
That's a nice gesture, but, uh, we can't spare the guy to be checking IDs. And, you know, I think just move it out, you know?
Okay.
I have one question, Ken.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
For Scott or Kirk, it's a toilet paper question, actually. When you said you got supplies of toilet paper, are you talking about for your, or the, uh, your, you know, you said the DPW, are you talking about our normal summer huge order? And where are you at on that?
We, we have both. Uh, we have the, the jumbo rolls and then as well as the regular, the regular like household rolls. So we're.
Don't talk any further, just clarifications, I'll think. You're prepared, though.
We're prepared.
Good job. Any other questions, Scott? Okay, thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. Our next item.
Holly had a, Mr. Mayor.
I was just going to make a quick comment that I've seen the crews out. I know you guys are working hard and I just really appreciate you guys showing up and, you know, doing what you do right now. It's much appreciated.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Town looked fantastic.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Uh, city park status regarding COVID-19. Kirk?
Yep. So what I wanted to just, um, update council on is the, um, all the city parks are currently open. However, we did close down the Mount Bald Head stairway. And the reason we did that is because of the physical layout of that facility. It's impossible to maintain a six-foot social distancing. Um, I had conversations with the Allen County Health Department and they recommended that if you're unable to control that, then you should close them down. So that's what we did. Um, I think we've, obviously we've heard some negative comments, but I think generally speaking, people understand why and they respect that. The other parks, however, we are keeping open. Um, for example, Oval Beach is open. And the sheriff's department has been, um, patrolling that facility and they have not been reporting there's been any issues. Uh, there's people using it obviously. But if they notice any congregation of groups, they do, or they will tell them to disperse. So what we've been doing right now is kind of using that, um, patrol method, keeping an eye on things. And if, um, the sheriff's department notices um, a congregation of people, they do address it. Um, the Village Square Park, however, is a little bit different situation. Um, we did have some reports of some, uh, people using the basketball court. I know some other municipalities have removed the actual, removed the basketball rims. I talked to Scott about this and he said that it's going to be a little bit more difficult to just remove the rims from the structure because of how they're mounted on there. And also the, um, one of our citizens made a comment about the playground part two, about maybe that's not the, uh, uh, best place to have open and encouraging people to use. So um, I put this on the agenda today just to get some feedback from council. We can continue to kind of, um, have the sheriff's department monitor those facilities. And if they notice people using them and congregating in, in a large group, they can have them disperse. Or we could put signs out and say the park's closed. Of course, obviously doing that doesn't mean people won't use it. It just means that um, the sheriff's department still have to go and, and tell people to get out of the park. So wanted to get some feedback from council members on that.
Any comments?
This is Garnet, I gotta.
Garnet, go ahead.
So Kirk, do we have any, um, kind of examples from other communities that have parks like we do and what, how they're addressing this? Any idea? Talk with your colleagues?
Yeah, some of the, um, it, it kind of, it really goes across the board. It's different. Um, some communities are shutting them down. Some of them are leaving open. I think it really goes to, instead of taking a, a, a broad brush approach and just say closing and everything, we're looking to see if there's actually an issue. Kind of what we did with Mount Bald Head Stairway. We kept that open, but then when we, we were getting reports that there were a lot of people using it and they weren't maintaining the distance. Then we, um, took the strategy of closing that, that, that part down. I've been in contact with both, um, Scott and the sheriff's department on a regular basis. And the sheriff's department has been telling me they have not seen is, um, situations like at Oval Beach or other parks where it looks like it's, it's a dangerous situation. So what we've been kind of doing is, is if the situation presents itself where it gets to a point where we can't control it, then we shut it down. And that's when I talked to the Allen County Health Department, that's what the, um, the folks there recommend. They said, keep them open. Um, but if you get to the point where you can't control them, then you need to shut them down. And at this point, we feel like we, we're not to the level where we can't control.
Got it. Great.
Any other comments?
Um, I live across the street from the kids' park and it doesn't seem to be terribly busy. Once in a while, but I fear like David Langley, a really nice day, it's going to fill up just because parents are, I'm sure at their wits end with a bunch of kids at home constantly. So, and wanting to get them out and let them around a little bit. So I guess I, I would ask for some extra sheriff patrol on a nice day, just to make sure it doesn't get overrun with people. But thus far, I think people have stayed away, actually.
I, I think that's a good point, Jane. I, I asked Kirk to check with the sheriff to see whether we could engage some, uh, reserve officers or, or assistant officer, I don't know who it might be, but to, we have one, uh, deputy in town on most days. And if we could get a one or two more reserve officers just to hit the parks and, and sort of make sure that people aren't, uh, congregating where they shouldn't be. I think that might be worth the investment. Kirk, uh, were you able to talk to the sheriff yet?
Yeah, I did talk to, um, Lieutenant Enfield. And again, their staffing is to the point right now, they don't have a lot of, um, extra people that they can employ. However, we do have, um, our contracted deputies. And I think it's reasonable to expect that they, um, if we give them some direction to keep an eye on the, uh, the parks, especially during nice days. Um, they've been doing that already, but I don't think we're to the point where we need to, to, um, I think our, our reserve deputy that we have on, or I'm sorry, our contracted deputy that we have on is sufficient to, to manage the park situation right now.
I agree with Kirk. Um, I think it was last weekend, there was a little girl sitting on top of the bathroom. I'm not exactly sure why. But, um, I called 911 just because she shouldn't have been sitting on top of the bathroom. And there was a deputy there within minutes. So I think, and I know through the fire department that calls are way down. So it's kind of interesting. I would think calls would be up, but they're not. They're way, way down. So I think the sheriff deputy in town can probably handle it now.
Okay, any other comments? Regarding the parks?
Yeah, Ken. Okay. Um, yeah, I would agree with Kirk. I mean, it's hard to tell the sheriff, uh, when it's a sunny day, put another guy on. We either got to say he's on every day or just go with their direction. I'm very comfortable with that. They could make the circuit from, you know, Village Green out to Oval Beach every 20 minutes and keep an eye on things. And, uh, I, I think that we leave it to them. I think they can handle it.
Mr. Mayor, I have Lieutenant Enfield is on this, uh, meeting as well on phone. I'm going to unmute him and see if he has any input. Brett, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would say, um, we, we've, we could monitor that stuff, uh, now. Um, you know, obviously the call volume is down, especially in town. You know, there's hardly anybody in town at times. So, you know, we just, we just, uh, you know, if somebody wants to call, if they do see something, you know, we just, you know, at times you just want to create a police state where we're going up and, you know, making contact with, you know, people that are, you know, in their families and so forth too. You know, but if we, you know, see a large scale congregation of things and stuff, you know, we will go up and talk to people and stuff and make sure that, uh, you know, everything's good and social distancing practices are being handled and so forth. So.
Good for me.
But I think, I think for reserves and stuff like that, I mean, that's an option at some point in time if this pushes later into the summer. But, you know, I think right now, you know, we can, you know, we're handling it. So I, I, I actually been, have been in town. You know, more than, uh, not lately, just because of, you know, I've been trying to stay out of the office and stuff for social distancing and so forth. So I've been kind of monitoring some of the situations that Kirk's been, and I've been talking about. So.
So Brett, do you think calls are up or down or?
Calls in town are definitely down. You know? For sure.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Brett. Appreciate it.
Yep, no problem.
To, uh, Saga Township Fire District regarding request to construct the floating dock.
Okay, I'm going to get this up here and I'm going to, um, uh, I'll unmute, um, Chief Janik and his staff here just a second, but let me give you just a quick overview of what's going on here. Um, the city of Sawtucket, um, recently entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the Sawtucket Township Fire District to, um, license an area of property for boat docking purposes. In that agreement, specifically section six, it requires that the fire department may not undertake any new construction, alteration or major repair work within the premises without the, um, approval of the city council. The, um, fire district would like to construct a new floating dock. And they have supplied some drawings which are included in your packet. And in order to get the, the official approval of the city council, I talked to our city attorney and he suggested a resolution to accomplish that. So um, I have a draft resolution that, uh, city attorney Jeff Sluggett has prepared. Again, it's just a draft at this point, uh, but we tried to incorporate as many things as we could for the protection of city. Um, obviously the big issue really is the water main. That it's a 16-inch water main that goes through there. And what we really want to, it's, the, the water main is about 40 years old. It has probably a 50, 60-year lifespan on it. But the concerns have just been if something happens to that water main at some point in time during the construction, obviously we would be pretty easy to, hopefully to, to see and evaluate happens if something possibly six months later, a year, um, if something happens at that point in time. Who's responsible? So with that said, um, Mr. Mayor, I will, um, I guess if you have any questions, I'm going to unmute the chief and, um, the deputy chief so that they can maybe answer questions from council. So if you bear with me for just a second here, I'll try to find them on the list and unmute them. Okay, I have unmuted Chief Janik and Deputy Chief Chris Mantles are unmuted.
Okay.
Good afternoon, council, Mr. Mayor. Um, we would certainly like the opportunity to proceed with our project as we've discussed and met often on the presentation. So I guess at this time, what questions could I try to answer with regards to the project?
Okay, do we have any questions, council?
Yeah, this is Garnet. Yeah, hi, chief. Thanks, by the way, for everything you're doing out there. Um, I have a quick question. Um, John Shar was, uh, I know in the packet, the, well, let me back up. So when we met about this and you presented one of the questions that was asked of you was if there had been any kind of depth measurement, if you will, of that area. And you kindly came back and provided that. And as a result, John Shar has kind of, uh, taken a look at it, which I appreciated and kind of pointed out the deeper areas of water. There you go. Thank you, Kirk. Uh, I'm curious, given what you know now as far as the depth of the lake in various areas. Number one, do you think it still makes sense to build in that configuration? Or number two, would it make sense to build something that would work, um, where the water is deeper?
I appreciate the, uh, the questions and appreciate Mr. Shar, uh, looking into going further north. The problem that we had with going further north, swinging into um, deeper water, we would gain about 12 inches of water. We didn't see a big benefit there. But the biggest problem, uh, lies in we're out of, out of our licensed treat area. We're out of the riparian rights area. We are beyond the licensed area. Also, our understanding from working on this project for some time was there was a big concern understandably about obstructing the view shed. Moving the dock further north is definitely in front of the dry deck, as you see on the drawing. So we worked within the boundaries of the direction of the council. And moving it that far north beyond the riparian reference line puts us out of licensed area. It also, um, creates a obstruction to the view shed. So there's some concerns about this as far as now relocating it to that side. We did under council direction, um, take a look at shifting it to the north, but not as much. And that's why we ran into the shallower water. As you do go farther north towards the neighbor's house, there is some deeper water. But that was contrary to what, um, the council's direction was.
Any other questions?
But.
Holly?
Hi, chief. Um, if you're going, uh, uh, into the deeper water, are you going away from the, um, uh, water main?
Well, yes and no. It's a good question, Holly. We were, um, we just didn't get this in time. We were doing some drawings on it. doing some drawings on it and the problem is the ramp is going to be close to the, to the water main on the configuration. Keep in mind, this whole thing, the power, everything would have to be shifted to the north. So there are some implications for where the ramp and where the other dock is secured to, you know, that proximity would change. I think Chris Mantles does have a drawing that we quickly put together that shows some of the inherent changes locating it that far to the north. So as the engineer said, whether you're two feet away or 40 feet away, there are risks with everything. I think even in an email, he said if you're 100 feet away, there are risks. So certainly, we're the last agency that wants to have any impact on a water main. And the project has taken into consideration, 20 feet away, I think our closest piling is about 18 feet away from the water main. So there was a comfort level with that. And I can please request if council member Becken would like to chime in on the water main, please do so.
I'll concur with what Greg said. Also, Darrell at Cal Lake is agreeable to the, to the configuration as it exists with a, you know, Aviat, I guess, which we'll get into a bit later, that Kirk and and Moxie have been talking about regarding inspections. And I don't, you know, we can get to that at the appropriate time, but as far as distancing between the main and the proposed pilings, 16 to 18 feet turns out to be a 32 to 38 foot pathway as compared to when we started it, we were at 20 feet. So I think that, you know, the distancing is, you know, agreeable. I don't know if they already got into discussions with Darrell about that or not, but these discussions we've had over the last couple of years, or a couple of days, I'm sorry. And I think Kirk was kinda involved with those. That was more of an email exchange, but Darrell and I had some specific discussions on it yesterday and actually even this morning.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Well.
Nope, I was good. I was moving paper.
Holly?
Um, I, I guess I would just say for the record that I'm just a little bit disappointed that we can't shift, especially seeing the depth and moving away from the water main because I hate to see when we really need to focus on taxpayers, you know, I hate to box retro boats in. I wanna see them be able to expand and I also wanna make sure the chief has access to that fire dock. And I, I know this is kind of, this ship has sailed literally, but I guess I'm disappointed that we can't move it a little bit deeper and a little bit out. I, I like John's letter today. It made sense to me, so.
Any other questions, comments?
I do, Chris.
Chris.
Are we approving the resolution now then to be voted on Monday night?
Well, this is a draft resolution, so I mean, if there's any, I mean, it has to be voted on, obviously, in a regular meeting. So if there's any changes or things you wanna have added, I would need that in.
Do it, yeah.
Give me the input.
I just wanted to make sure that we do it now, so Monday night it's just a vote.
Yeah. I have a question. I'm having trouble with computer.
Okay.
Picked up a virus, but anyway, that ramp that the city owns that we're willing to sell to the fire department, there seems to be a $3,000 price tag on that. Are people satisfied with that? Or is there any?
That's, that's the, that's the next item.
Oh, all right. I'm sorry. I can wait.
Okay, any other comments?
Ken?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
I guess what, if my understanding is right, Kirk, you're kinda looking for some feedback as to anything that should be added to the agreement.
Correct.
And so the discussion came up with regarding inspections. Can you share that or maybe have John address that in reference to a pre and post construction inspection of the water main?
Yeah, I think Mr. Moxie has left the meeting. I don't see him on anymore. But obviously, the issue really with this is, is the concern has been regarding the water main because we've had, we've had some issues in the past up in the Dune Grass development that a water main got put in and then at some point in time, it got damaged somehow. It was months later. And at that point, everybody kind of pointed the finger in a different direction and the contractor said it wasn't our fault and Cal Lake said it's not our fault. And so what we're trying to do is just, I think, in talking with Darrell at Cal Lake, is that if something were to happen to the water main, obviously, if, if it's damaged during construction, we would hope that you would, we would know right away if it was damaged to the point where it's severed or something breaks. But the real issue is gonna be what happens six months down the road if there's an issue with it. How do we determine what caused that damage? And it's not 100% perfect world, so maybe you'll never be able to determine that, but we're trying to take reasonable measures, at least for the city side, so that we protect, have some protections in place. When I talk to our city engineers, what they usually do when they do a road project is they'll go out prior to that project, do an inspection, they'll videotape everything around, so that when they get a complaint six months later that a property owner says, well, your road construction caused my chimney to fall down, that they have videos of all the surrounding properties and they can determine if something was damaged previously before the construction started. We've used that quite a bit on a lot of projects. So the thought process was, is there a way to just put another level of protection on here that says we did a pre-inspection of the water main to make sure that it's, it's not, you know, there isn't already some existing damage. And then after the construction, we do a post-inspection and that way, if something happens after the fact, it's the contractor that the fire department hires can't be blamed, the fire department can't be blamed. It's, that was just one of the things we were talking about possibly doing. Now, how we do that is another question. Obviously, the water mains is underwater. They have done some underwater inspections in the past, so that maybe you could do, just in that area, inspect it and determine that it's okay, there's no damage. And then after the construction, do the same inspection and then at that point, if something does happen, everyone's protected. So that was the thought process, or at least some discussions.
And Ken, if you don't mind?
Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
That's why I was hoping that Ken or John was still around because he had sent some information earlier that would be, I think, helpful to the discussion regarding inspection options and ideas involved, possible involvement, which I think has come up in the past with the county dive team. I understand they're gonna have to go down there somehow and mark it, so the contractor knows exactly where to put the piling in. I don't know exactly that procedure. Chris or the chief might know more about that, but there may be some inspection documents that could be used, I think, pre-construction and then there might be just a post-construction. They even mentioned, I believe, Kirk, correct me if I'm wrong, that there could be an observer down there during the process.
Correct.
So again, these are just, these topics that Kirk had approached Barry and I as the Cal Lake reps from the city. And so we've had this kind of ongoing dialogue going on and getting information from Darrell, getting information from John Moxie. So I don't know if Barry has anything to add along the lines or not.
Barry?
This is Chris. I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So if we're looking at who would be responsible pre and post and everything looks good and we go, we go forward and then in six months, something happens to the water pipe, how are we, is the city covered if it's not gonna be somebody else's fault? Just that the pipe, which is 40 years old, has a lifespan of, I don't know how long. When that breaks, do we have the type of insurance that would cover the cost of a new water pipe?
I don't believe there's insurance for just wear and tear, you know, so it would have to be some outside damage, something that caused damage. I mean, you could come up with all types of potential examples. A fireboat sunk and landed on top of the water main and crushed it. Well, the fire district would be responsible through their insurance.
Well, then I talked about that and I think it's definitely important that we have the videos before and after to make sure that it is covered, either by them if there's a destruction.
And, you know, hearing this discussion, I'm sure that Chief Janik is going, well, we didn't budget that into our project, but the council is talking about it now and I think we feel strongly that we would like a pre and a post inspection.
Yeah.
This is Gar.
Anyone wanna be recognized?
I just wanna ask questions, Gar.
Yeah, Gar.
So can that then be reflected in this resolution, Kirk, as far as a pre and post inspection with FLYC and Vanderbilt?
Yes, I would add language in there. Just, I wouldn't get too detailed, but I would put something general that we, the city would need a pre and post inspection that's approved by our city engineers so that it's covered.
Great, thanks.
So it's Holly. I had a question. Mayor?
Holly?
So just so I understand, does the construction company have liability in case something happens to the water main? Am I understanding this clearly?
They would, yes, during construction.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chris Mantles, if I may comment.
Yes.
Would the council consider allowing the dive team and us to do this video, since, as you're correct, it was not in the budget to do this, where could we use the county divers and a GoPro camera or something? So you, you have the video inspection that you desire without us paying it through an engineering firm possibly, both before and after?
And that is something, I talked to John Moxie, he did bring that up as a possibility.
Okay.
Okay, this is Chris.
Yeah, Grace.
I would just have a little concern about that because I would, well, I think the dive team is certainly able to take the pictures, but the engineering part, I think, needs to be involved. And maybe they can do that just looking at the film. I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, can I comment? It's Greg.
Yes, please, chief.
I would be in favor of, we'll figure out how to pay for it. I would be in favor of the comfort level of having the expertise of engineering decide what method and how it should be done for the preservation of the water main. Let's just hire professional people. Just as a side note, we have engaged the county dive team to mark the water main because plans can be off, as built can be buried. So we've already reached out to them, so we'll, we'll know exactly where it is. But as far as validating with video, we respect that and we'll figure out, I have no idea what that cost. Do we have to do the whole water main? Or are we just doing 100 feet? That would be nice to know. So, but I am certainly willing to figure out how to pay for it. And I agree. I agree with you.
Well, Ken?
Yeah, Jane.
As chair of the fire board, I'm sure the fire board would wanna know, would be in favor of this survey. I think it probably should be a shared cost with everybody concerned because we all have a stake in the game. So I would think the city, Cal Lake, the contractor especially, and us should have this survey done before and after just to show liability when it comes up, if it comes up.
Point.
Ken?
Yes, Gary.
I respect your comments, Jane, as always, but I do not think we would get a buy-in from the Cal Lake board to participate in, because this is not their project. You know, if somebody wants to put in something by their water main, it's the person that's putting it in's responsibility to make it safe.
And Cal Lake did, within the last, I'll say five years, have had the river crossings inspected already and that was at Cal Lake's expense. We did not pass any of those, but Cal Lake's expenses, community expenses, I mean, when you get right down to it. So I'd have to kinda agree with Barry, so I already got two votes there on that proposal. Again, going back, John Moxie had some ideas regarding resources who could get this done, correct, Kirk? In his notes or his memo?
That is correct. That is correct. I think, I think really, for the most part, as long as we put in there, there's, we need a post, a pre-inspection and a post-inspection. I wouldn't get into the nitty-gritty details. Obviously, we're gonna have our engineering, the city's engineers working for us to give us that reassurance, so of whatever pre and post inspection that is.
And I apologize if you think this is kinda at last minute, but this all came up within the last two days, two or three days, right?
Correct.
You know, so we've moved fairly quick, given the timeframe that these prints were made available to, well, we got them the same time everybody else in the council got them.
Yeah, I didn't get the, I didn't get the, I didn't get the draft resolution back from the attorney until right before I sent the agenda out last night, so we're moving pretty quick on it.
Mayor can ask one quick question?
Yeah, Holly.
If we moved, I know, I know I'm beating a dead horse, but if we moved that, that dock out, wouldn't we avoid the cost of this engineering and this worry?
I may jump in on that. I would say no, Holly. We would inspect it wherever we're gonna put it.
Well, and doesn't that put one of the pilings even closer to the water line, Greg, if we moved it the way was, it was recommended?
Jane, we would have to have some time to lay this out. We did a rough drawing, but we don't wanna mislead anybody. We would need time to put that on our CAD and determine that. The initial preliminary drawing looked like one of the pilings was closer, but I don't wanna speak out of turn, misrepresent the proposal.
But if we moved it, that would mean, you know, that would put it in front of the viewing dock, the city viewing dock. I think, you know, we all agreed on this at the last meeting, so not sure why we're even discussing moving it again.
Well, may I comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Greg, please.
We, we're under the impression that moving it to the north was, was not the way to go. Again, if we move it to the north, we are out of the licensed area, out of the riparian rights area that we are licensing. Also, we have to go back to the Army Corps, Fisheries and the Eagle and resubmit the whole permit. We have also paid for a resolution, $1,600, as directed by the city attorney for this area. All that, you can throw out the window if you're gonna move the, move the dock to the north. So it's kind of a bit blindsided at this time to, to move it that way.
Other comments?
This is Chris.
Chris.
I'm not seeing any reason to change what we've already approved. We looked at view shed, we looked at the depth, we looked where the water line went and moving it to the north. I mean, I thought it'd be great if you just swung it out. Well, if you swing it out, you go right over the line, over the water pipe. So no, looking at everything we've discussed over the last 16 years. Looking at everything we've discussed over the last six to eight months, I'm, I'm happy with the way it is.
I would, I would agree with Chris, uh, with the caveat of the period post ex- inspections.
Yeah.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is Chris Mantles again. I, I did have the time just to quickly, I don't know the exact location of the piling, but I did throw Mr. Shar's proposal out on our CAD in the depth soundings. I originally did. Uh, and it's not actually, uh, in his potential drawing, the, the gangway actually ends what is currently about eight feet into the water. Um, when you actually move it close enough to shore to where that same length gangway reaches shore, um, it's actually, we, the, the big boat would actually be in about eight feet of water currently. And roughly when the water goes down three to four feet, it would be touching the bottom. Um, so it, it looked good and we did try all those areas, uh, when we designed this months ago and couldn't find a way to actually functionally make it work. Um, putting it where Mr. Sharp proposed would require a fifty foot long gangway, which is not one we have nor budgeted for either. Uh, so we did, we did try to address his concerns today and it still functionally didn't work as he presented it.
Hello?
Ken, are you still there?
Ken, Ken snacked off my screen.
Uh-oh, I think we lost him.
That's when the mayor, okay, I'm steps in.
Alrighty. Yeah. Um, are there any other comments, uh, or questions from the, the council? Okay, then we'll move forward as it is and I don't have an agenda in front of me, so I'm not sure what the next one is.
Hold on a second. I'm, um, I'm going to try to get ahold of him. One second. Okay, he's going to try to log back on. He's, he got, uh, internet connection dropped, I think.
Uh, this next item is for purchase the gangway.
Okay, Kirk?
Yep, so the, um, the fire district, let me just keep an eye in here to make sure that the mayor doesn't come back on here quick while I'm talking. The fire district has made a, a request to purchase, um, the aluminum gangway the city has. This aluminum gangway was previously installed for the use on the dinghy dock in Coughlin Park. When the city installed the new shoppers dock in two thousand nineteen, we had to use a different gangway because the gangway that we had purchased in two thousand fifteen wasn't compatible with the new dock design. Um, at that point, um, the, um, right now, the city council hasn't identified any, any particular use for this, this gangway. We just purchased it in two thousand fifteen for, um, five thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and forty-eight cents. And it's still in great condition. Um, so it's, it's a good functional gangway. It just doesn't meet our needs. Um, in order to come up with a value, um, again, these items are pretty unique. So I contacted the, uh, company that, that we purchased it from Bristol Industries, I believe they're out of Ohio, and talked to the owner on the phone and asked him, he looked up the invoice so he could see what it is that we purchased. And I, I asked him just what he thought maybe a, a retail used value would be. Um, and he stated to me about three thousand dollars. Now, again, this was all verbal. Um, I asked, I contacted him today and asked if he would be willing to send an email and he was not, um, for whatever reason, I didn't want to send an email with any numbers on there. I think he was concerned about getting into a position of somebody offered something less or that they'd be liable or something. So I didn't understand the rationale behind it, but at any rate, I, I couldn't force him to do that. So, so the only option that I, you know, in terms of getting a, 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 a value of what now that I could bring to council and say, here's what, here's what it might be worth on the used market was contacting the manufacturers. But that's what they gave me. Um, the city ordinance requires, um, if we have any personal property that the city needs, no longer needs to, um, use, um, the ordinance is pretty clear. And so either you, our options are to put it out for a, a bid, competitive, you know, it's for sale and we, we allow people to bid on it, or the res- the ordinance does allow the city council to sell items. The resolution, if they want to not use a competitive bidding process. So I'm just, that's why I have this on for council. Um, I do have a draft resolution on here in the packet that we used in the past for items that we have sold, uh, without competitive bidding. And what we have done in the past is we, um, had some public works trucks. So instead of having those trucks where people submit bids, we just put it, we would put it out there and say, um, um, we put a price on it. We said this truck, you know, two thousand dollars and the first person that came and purchased it, we sold it to them. So, um, the council has a couple of different options. Well, actually three options. You could decide to keep the gangway if you think at some point in time you may want to use it at some other facility, um, which I'm not aware of any, in, that we would be using it at anytime soon. You could pass an ordinance, um, to sell it to the fire department without competitive bidding and, um, put whatever price you want on there. Or you could go through like we, with the, the other part of the ordinance and put it out for bid and allow people to, the city could set a reserve and accept bids and the highest bid above the reserve would get it. So those are your options and the staff just needs some guidance on how you would like to proceed if, if, if at all.
Okay, any questions or comments? Jane, you had something?
Well, I, I think we should sell it to the fire department and, um, and come up with the price. Um, this project is getting expensive and we paid, the fire department has paid for a lot of the, the process. And we seem to have a nice arrangement with the city back and forth on facilities and all that kind of stuff. So I, I, I think the price is a little pricey for us. Um, I don't, I guess I, I'm interested in what everybody else thinks.
Barry?
Um, I agree with Jane. I think we should sell it directly to the fire district. Um, I hate to peg it at three thousand because that's an arbitrary number that, uh, a guy came up with and would not substantiate for his
Exactly.
reasons. Uh, so is it really three thousand? You would find out what it's worth in an open bid. But, uh, again, I'd like to just get it to, the fire district may get a better deal on it than an open bid. I don't know, but I'd like to be less than three thousand, but I'd like to sell it directly to them.
Any other comments?
I have a question. Chris love, uh, either Chris or, or either, uh, Chris Mantles or the chief. What did you bu- did you have a line item budget for this in your project or the gangway?
Yes, um, we did, uh, Mark, we had a, a budget in there, but then what happened was pricing of the metal went up, the dock. We originally, we had seven thousand dollars in there and then everything, costs started skyrocketing up on this. So we had to start backing off some of the costs. That's why we're reaching out to buy a used gangway or ramp, so to speak. So originally, I think there was seven thousand dollars in there.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, go on.
Go ahead, chief.
We didn't have, um, a lot of the costs incurred in the project because we were handling most of it ourselves. But then with, you know, various needs, um, engineering, fleece and Vandabring, some legal costs, we lost a lot of our budget ability to fund a new gangway.
Okay.
Uh, Chris?
Yes. Oh, hey, woo, mayor's back.
I'm sorry, I, I got disconnected and, and we, Kirk and I had some trouble getting my voice back, so I'm here.
Okay, I, it's over in your, your corner.
Yeah, well, you know, since I don't have the whole flow of this, why don't you, uh, continue on heading up this item?
Okay, Kirk gave us three options, uh, and what we've had comments from three people. Um, one was a question about what the chief had in a budget before that. And then Jane and Barry had said that they'd like to see it go to the fire department. I haven't heard from other people, so let's see if we have any other comments.
Well, if I can follow up on how they have that information from the chief, uh, our district's been pretty good to us, allowing us to store our vehicles up in their facility, I think. Yes. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Yep.
So, uh, it, I kind of like the three thousand dollar figure, chief, but I, I, I have no problem letting them paying it over, over two or three budgets, other budgets, so they can factor it in. Uh, you know, we're not going to live or die if we're not getting our money for that gangway right away. And maybe that would be a good, good, uh, approach.
Ken, can, Ken, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
That's where we're at.
Okay.
I've got a question, Scar.
Yeah.
So just for consistency's sake, um, what has been our practice in the past when it's come to having items such as this that can be purchased? What do we normally do? Is it similar to this where we would say, hey, one of our, uh, you know, city services, you can buy this? Or do we normally put it out to bid?
We've done it, um, a number of ways. Um, we've done it where we've, we've, um, we've had it where, where there was a bid. Um, we accepted bids, we, we put it out there, um, advertised it and, and people could bid on it. We would have a reserve, obviously. Uh, we've also sold things, um, directly. Now, the ordinance also, if it's under a thousand dollars, it doesn't need to go through this process. And a lot of the stuff we've had has been under a thousand dollars. So we've just sold that, um, you know, like I said before, we, we had a mower one time that we just put out in front of Public Works and put for sale first eight hundred dollars and somebody came and purchased it. So there isn't really a precedent in terms of, we, we, we've utilized a lot of different options in, in disposing of property.
And then, may I, again, I have one more question along the lines. Has there been, when you do a competitive bid process, has there been a great deal of interest from folks regardless of what it is?
Depends on the item. If we've had some items where we've gotten one bid. It just really depends. This particular item's probably going to be, um, depends on its specific. So if somebody has a, you know, for our example, like with the shoppers dock, um, this gangway was a perfectly good, um, gangway. It was ADA compliant, it met everything, but it didn't meet the configuration of our shopper stock. So if somebody is able to construct a dock where this layout works or the, the, the dimensions, it's probably very valuable. If, if they don't, it might not be as valuable. So I did, when I contacted the company Bristol Industries, I did ask them, um, if we were to purchase this exact same gangway and have it shipped up here, you know, what's kind of the cost? And they did say it's probably in the six thousand plus range. So it's not over six thousand dollars, but they estimated that, um, the value of it would be right around six thousand plus to get the exact same thing.
Any other questions?
Um, Barry here. Uh, Kirk did attach to the agenda the, uh, sample resolution, if you will. Uh, so we do have a, we're a document to work from, uh, something we've used before and, uh, you know, I like Mark's idea about, well, if we're breaking the budget, uh, let them pay it off over three years, their choice. So, and then stick with the three thousand.
So, anyone else?
Yes, Gar, again, then, then I'd like to suggest in, in that, um, resolution proposed item D, that, um, it actually include the word of verbal appraisal for resale. Um, just to be specific, because we don't have anything in writing from them. So I think we should be clear that it's a verbal appraisal.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I, that's a good point. And, uh, you know, I was kind of thinking the same thing.
And I, um,
Jane?
I, you know, I still would think maybe we could lower the price a bit for the, for the fire department. There's lots of tit for tat between the fire department and the city. We have a really good relationship. Scott and the fire department works together constantly for projects. And, uh, I just think this is a little high for us. If we could lower it a bit, that would be nice. I think, um, three thousand's just a bit high. We've incurred a lot of extra added expense because of, um, because of looking into every possible way to construct this dock. The fire department's put a great deal of time and money into this, um, to please everybody. So I, I'm asking that you drop the price a bit.
Give us a number.
Um, well, half to maybe, maybe fifteen to two thousand, somewhere in there.
This is Gar.
Gar.
Uh, just, I just want to speak careful that, um, I, I think we need to be careful on how we, uh, word this then. I think with a, with a piece of property that is certainly more than a thousand dollars, um, uh, we want to be sure that we get everyone's input on this. And if, you know, if we were to put it out for competitive bid, um, we might actually find out what it's really worth, um, from the larger population, if you will. And I think, I just think we need to be very careful about, um, doing it this way.
But I also think taxpayers already bought this. And then if we didn't sell it to the fire department, then taxpayers would have to buy it again at a much, much, much higher price.
This is Chris.
Chris.
Yeah, I think this is a slippery slope. Um, what Kirk, how long does it take to put something out for bid? I mean, it's going to happen before they even start construction, I would assume. If there's no, no bid, then we can work with the fire department. But I think once we start deciding who gets something with really, uh, an amount of money that we have no concept of, I just, I think it's a slippery slope.
I agree. Well, again, my, my intent, when I was trying to come up with a value in something of this is, wasn't to stick it to the fire department or anything like that. But with the ordinance, I have to first determine if the, if the property that we're disposing of is over a thousand dollars. Cause if it's not over a thousand dollars, then I, then I take care of it administratively. So the only way that I could come up with some sort of value was to, there isn't any, actually any gangway appraisal firms out there. So the, the quickest and easiest thing I do was call the company that sold it to us, talk to the actual owner. And he looked up the invoice, he knew what the product was and I, he just gave his opinion of what he thought it was retail value to sell it. I didn't tell him we're going to sell it to a fire department. I didn't tell him we're going to sell it to a private individual. I just said, the city has this piece of property, we want to dispose of it. What do you, what would you as a professional who builds these docks and knows more about it? Or gangways and knows more about them, what would you recommend the price be on the used market? He said three thousand dollars would probably be a good, um, um, price on the used market. So that's all I have to go with, um, in terms of coming up with a value. The reason that he, I don't know why they didn't want to send me something in writing, but it's, it is what it is, so.
And just to follow up on that, I'm not saying that that wasn't a good idea to try. I think it really was. I am saying that to go forward with this without putting it up for, out, out for open bid, uh, to me is, is, uh, I just don't think it's a good idea. I think it's a slippery slope. And tell me though, how long does it take to do a bid? How much time do we have to give it for a bid?
It wouldn't be very long. I would, basically, we would advertise it. I just put, the city has a four by twenty-four aluminum gangway. Um, and the city's accepting bids on it. We put it out in front of city halls, people could view it and put a, a deadline. It could be as quick as a week. We, any bid submitted, um, needs to be in by, you know, April, you know, pick a date, any date. And then, um, if, um, if the bids come in, you know, the city would have a reserve and if the bids came in over it, then the council would have to look at those bids and then, and then award it to whoever the, the bidder is.
This is Gar. I think that's a great way to proceed.
Uh, this is Barry. I, uh, have been persuaded and I, I would agree with that.
This is Holly. I, I also agree. I agree with what Chris said a hundred percent.
Well, I would weigh in an agreement as well, particularly if we can expedite it. I don't think we need to stretch out this whole thing anymore. Good. Mark, uh, you didn't weigh in. Are you okay?
Uh, I think this is going to be a hot ticket item. And I think there's people that'll buy it for speculative purposes, a marine contractor, a marina. So if the city's looking at purely from re- our biggest return on investment, that's the best way to go. But we all, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. Uh, so, but Uh, so, but I think that's also balanced against working with our, you know, our other entities, and I go back to, Fire District's been pretty good to us when it comes to storing our vehicles. Uh, our police, uh, our excess police cars primarily. Um, we've got a reasonable resale amount. I wish the guy would have provided it. Maybe Kirk can get it in by an email.
I, I tried today. He won't, he wouldn't send me an email.
Okay, all right. Well, then that, you know, then it's his word, and it's, like you said, a verbal thing, but anyways, you know, I guess you put it on the docket and, uh, just see how the vote goes Monday. Gives us some more time to think about it.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, then let's move to the emergency no-wake zones, uh, be, uh, part of the enrolled House Bill fifty-four oh one. Uh, Kirk, you wanna lead this off?
I will. I'm gonna, um, unmute Lieutenant Ennsfield here, if I can find him. He's still on, just 'cause he might have some. Well, I don't think I have him here anymore. Okay, um, the, uh, I had some council members that asked me to put this on the agenda for, for discussion, because the Michigan, Michigan's governor recently um, signed into law some bills that related to, um, no-wake zones. And hopefully you were able to, um, review some of the information I put here, but it's pretty complex. Um, basically, the, uh, the no-wake zones, the emergency no-wake zones, rather, the local municipalities can put in a temporary fourteen day, um, no-wake, emergency no-wake zone. You can have a, a one-time extension per year. That doesn't do us a whole lot of good, really, for fourteen days, and then an additional fourteen days. Um, there's also some other provisions in there that you can go, um, longer, uh, six-month period, but the, the process to do that is, is much more cumbersome. Um, you have to get the, the DNR involved and some other things, so again, I just started putting this information together this week, because the, the, the bills went through the the House and the Senate, and we're past the state level. But what I can tell you, I guess, in a, in a quick nutshell review is that the, the fourteen-day emergency no-wake zone, I just don't think it's gonna really do us much good, because it's only for fourteen days. The longer period of time, we could do it, but it's gonna take, um, it, it's gonna take some substantial work to get it in place. Now, when I talked to Lieutenant Ennsfield, he said the Marine, County Marine, County Marine Patrol's budget is only five thousand dollars. That's their entire budget. So if we do put an emergency no-wake zone in, you're gonna have to be able to enforce it. And some of the issues are gonna be, who's the enforcement agency, which would be obviously the county, and do they have the resources to do it, so it's, it's, uh, it's gonna take, I think, a bit more discussion on this, and get the sheriff's department involved too, to figure out what the best-case scenario is. Also, probably wanna talk to our partners across the river in Douglas as well.
Well, I have, I have to confess that I was the one who, I wanted to push this forward, because I, like another of our council persons, live in a place where the water is still overflowing our seawall, and when boats come by at twenty miles an hour creating a wake, even a fishing boat, uh, creating a wake, it, it erodes our, our lawn, essentially. And I mean, it's causing tremendous amount of damage here. So I, I was horrified to see the, um, uh, the, the requirements that the state put on this. I mean, it, it almost like took a great, uh, concept and made it undoable. I, I really don't get that. So anyway, I, I certainly don't want us to have to go through a lot of rigmarole for limited, uh, benefit here, uh, but it is, it is a very critical issue for some of us who live on a lake.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
No, this is Garn. Obviously, I'm the other resident there, and, um, it is too bad that this is still stuck in committee, um, given our water levels and, uh, lake erosion. Um, my, I guess my question is, is there a way that we could, um, extend the no-wake buoys when they go out? So, 'cause once folks hit that bridge, they'll, the guys, most of our guys, they put their fishing boats in up there at the park. Um, then they come under the bridge, and it's like, as soon as they come under that bridge, they gun it. I mean, that's where especially building number five on the river really gets the brunt of it. Um, so is there any way that we could, once the buoys go out, extend that no-wake closer to the bridge? Uh, well, I don't know if it's closer or further out. I don't know what the right way to do it is, but at least so that they maintain a slow distance until there's, until they're way out there in another cow lake.
Unfortunately, the no-wake zone that we have right now is already established. It's a predefined area. And in order to enlarge that, um, there's a whole process that you have to go through, and Mark, I think, knows a lot about this as well, but you gotta go through public hearings, and it's a, I mean, I think it's a very long process. I thought the same thing. When you see these buoys, I thought, um, oh, you just throw the buoys out and there's a no-wake zone. And when I contacted the sheriff's department, some other people, I realized it's much more involved in that, and there's a predefined area. The reason it is, is because the sheriff's department only enforce the area that's been approved. Um, Councilmember Beckon, I'm not sure if you have any info, but I know you, you know some little bit about this as well.
Well, it's not the first time the city's gone through this, and we actually took us years to expand the current no-wake zone, or the buoys, from the, from basically Hoffman Street. Okay, on the north side of Coral Gables, up to where they're at now. Uh, it, the public hearing process is, uh, embarra, unbearable, becomes acrimonious. It's run by the DNR, uh, it's a real, you know, what kind of show, my estimation. It was not a good thing to go through. Go through again. I, I think we, we, we should have a emergency no-wake zone. And if we, we should at least attempt to go through the House Bill five, four, six, three, uh, procedures. And, uh, and just see how far we can get without going through a lot of, you know, additional expense for marine patrol. Having a no-wake zone, even if it's not patrolled, is better than not having one at all, in my mind.
I would agree with that.
Okay. And whoever writes these bills, to be honest with you, they don't know anything about boating. Ken, 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 Ken can address that. I mean, they talk about speed. Speed is one of the hardest things to determine on, on the water, and oftentimes, speed has nothing to do with wake.
Yeah.
So it's the size of the, it's the size of the boat. The wake is determined by the sheriff's department. If, if they were on here, they'd tell you how they make the decision, you know, what's, you may not be able to know what a, you know, you might be able to not be able to define a no-wake zone, but it's kinda like pornography. You know it when you see it. Right?
Yep.
So, anyways, that's my, my comments.
Just, just a, a question here. Is that anything we can legislate ourselves as a city, or is that waterways or not?
Yeah, from what little I know, the DNR, uh, is the driver of all this. You get, they're, they're the ones that determine the no-wake, uh, areas.
Okay, so as a city council, we couldn't say, hey, we want a no-wake zone. We couldn't do that here, here to here.
Unfortunately, yeah. The only time the state wants you to take control of it is if there's money involved, but then it's ours.
All right, so I, I think the, um, consensus would be to move forward with something that is, um, not painfully, uh, um, requiring a whole lot of investment, like the six-month thing, but perhaps a fourteen-day, um, one at least.
Yes.
Well, I don't know. The other one is, isn't the other one, there's an emergency, uh, provision in there?
Well, they're both.
Go through six months?
No, they're both emergency. It's just the, the first one is a fourteen-day provision with a one-time extension. And then the other one is a six-month emergency no-wake, but it's, the process for it is much more involved. You have to have the DNR involved, you have to have, show your ordinances, you have to show where you're gonna put the buoys, you have to show how you're gonna pay for the buoys. Um, it's not, it's not.
But it's not, got nothing to do, there's no public hearings, there's no, it's basically a file and approve, so to speak.
I believe so, yeah.
I don't think that's that big deal, but given, given, I, I understand giving the people involved their, their current, uh, work, you know, schedules and going and so forth. It's kinda throwing an additional burden on our staff. Uh, and I don't know who else to do it.
Let, let's think.
Unless the harbor authority takes it up.
Yeah, yeah, we have a lot of staff on the harbor authority. Well, I, I encourage us to just think about it a little bit more and see what kind of work would be involved when going after either option. Um, so.
It really makes sense, no sense doing something if Douglas doesn't, is not interested, because and you have a no-wake zone and half the lake.
Well, that's true.
What I'll do is, I'll come up with a, um, a list of exactly the steps of what we need to do. Um, and that way, at least the council can look at that and evaluate how much time and energy it's gonna be involved in, and see if it's worthwhile. So I'll put together a little bit more detailed, um, um, information exactly of the, the steps we need to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And, and if I may ask too, in the meantime, talk to the, uh, city manager Douglas, see if this has come up in their discussions at all.
Yeah.
Will do.
Yep. Okay, uh, agenda review for Monday's meeting.
Well, for Monday's meeting, what I'll, we'll have the, uh, resolution to approve the request to construct, uh, the floating dock for the fire department, per the, um, intergovernmental agreement that the city has approved. I will also have the resolution to purchase the gangway. Um, I'll make some minor adjustments to it as suggested during the discussion, and the council can either vote, um, that resolution up or down, since we don't have a unified consensus at the workshop. We'll put it on there for further discussion and possible action. Those are the two primary, I think, only action items besides paying the bills. Um, unless Monica has anything additional. It looks like she's shaking her head, so she can chime in and let us know what she has as well.
A reappointment of Ken to the harbor authority. He is currently expired, according to Douglas. Can you hear me?
I can, yes. Okay. Barry?
I know, I was, uh, just wondering why Ken was so quiet on that one.
I think he was just so happy.
Yeah.
Okay, no other items? Uh, that'll be, maybe it'll be a short meeting.
Now, the other thing I wanted to, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead.
Um, I also have, um, our, our, all of our administrative staff is, is attending this meeting today, so obviously, Mr. Herbert was able to give you an update. I have our zoning administrator and, um, our city treasurer is in the office working today as well, so if you wanted to ask them any questions or get any feedback from them, I wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to, to talk to them, so um, they are all on the line if any council members want, would like to ask them any questions.
Um, well, I'd, I'd like to say we're proud of the way you guys conducted business over this, uh, very terrible period of time here. Um, good job. I've heard no negative comments from our constituents that, uh, you know, they were unable to do business with the city, so I'd give you those kudos. Anybody else have a comment?
No.
Questions? All right. Other items of discussion? Do we have any?
I do not.
Beckon's good.
Yep. Okay. Uh, time for public comment. Again, we limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, if you wish to make a comment, please raise your hand, uh, the, do the raise your hand button in the participant screen. Anybody?
Ken, the other thing, we have, we do have some people that are on the phone, so please let them know that if they would like to be recognized, if they hit star nine, it will raise their hand and we can unmute them.
Okay, those of you on the phone, I hope you heard that. Star nine.
And maybe just to be safe, I'm gonna unmute all, just to make sure that, uh, we don't miss anybody, so I'm gonna hit unmute all. If you're, uh, a participant, you can say something.
I'm seeing here that Mark Kung will raise his hand.
Okay, I will unmute him right now.
Yep. Mark?
Well, hi, Ken. I don't know if my microphone.
It's working.
Uh, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Uh, I just have one comment. Uh, I'll, I'll stick with just the water, uh, in the road. Um, I happen to, you know, we reside on the east side of Water Street. We're not on the water side. Yet, we are flooded all day, every day for the past year. Um, the water goes up and down, uh, and I am flooded by the sewer system, the city sewer system, not the river. Because the, the sewer system, because the way it's hooked up, just siphons the river into my front yard. Um, so my concern is, you know, everybody's addressing the water, but my, my problem is, and, and relates to the city sewer system, and nothing has been really done to it. And I've been talking and bringing this up about every other month for the past year. Um, and, you know, I'm concerned that, that nothing's really gonna be done, other than we're gonna keep, keep kicking the can down the road. Uh, the sewer system just floods me every time it rains. Not only that, when the river goes up and down, every time it rains, we get flooded. Um, and the, the, this is all comes up the, the sewer in front, in our front yard. Um, and there's really, you know, the, and the sandbags that I put up there have been hit so bad by the snowplows that there's hardly anything left. So, I, you know, I'm trying to understand what are we gonna do long-term, because the, it's the, the city sewer system that keep flooding. Um, and there, there's really no plan that I've seen. I've lis, listened to some of it. I mean, the, the mention of a, another pump by God, these are tiny pumps that I put in down the street here. And, you know, they're, they're three to five thousand gallons per minute. We need fifty thousand to a hundred thousand gallons per minute to keep up with what happens with a rainstorm or a big storm out of the north. So, I'm concerned that, that we aren't really addressing something, where we're gonna do something, we're just gonna keep talking about it from now until hopefully the problem goes away. Yet, you know, and I've heard city councilmen say that, you know, this has only happened three times in the last thirty years. Well, we're flooded every day, so, um, you know, i- it's, it's a continuous problem that really never gets anything on track to do something. Um, with the water coming up and down like it does, all the mud wipes up on the sidewalk, people slip on it and fall, so you know, it, it's, it's constant. So, I'm just asking for some, something to be done versus just talk about it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Tha, thank you, Mark. Any other comments? Public comments? Uh, Daniel Fox. Can we unmute him?
I like that. Um, I had a thought, a suggestion, as I listened to you talk about the no-wake, uh, and now it's telling me I'm muted and unmuted all this.
No, we did that. I, Beck did that, Dan. I just wanted to see if I could shut you down. I can't.
I'm wondering if, and I get that all this restrictions that the state puts on this and all the rest of it. But in, in light of, partly in light of the situation we all find ourselves in for these kinds of meetings and COVID this and social distancing and all the rest of it. I think there's, in the general public, sort of, an enhanced understanding of, you know, the way each person's actions can affect someone other than themselves, someone they don't even know. And a, a greater consciousness of one's own, you know, uh, one's own, the consequences of one's own actions. In that regard, while the law on no-wake is all loaded up and all the stuff I didn't even bother reading in the, in the packet, what if you, what if you invested in two four-by-eight sheets of cardboard, hung them from each side of the Blue Star Bridge, and used that as a message to boaters that is a, instead of a a no-wake law thing, it's simply a request that says with heightened lake levels, your wake can cause real problems on the shoreline here. Please be conscious of your neighbors. Please be, you know, a, a, a request as opposed to a a mandate. Okay? File that wherever you want. The other thing I wanted to bring up briefly, Mark said before, a, and I get both sides of the issue of trying to bid out the, the, the gang plant to get a fair value, and I understand that, and I understand fiduciary responsibility and the rest of it. Um, there is, however, on the other side of it, bearing consideration to Mark's point, the fact that the Fire District provides services for which we are, that just is not compensated, nor does it ask for compensation, that have real in-market values, if one were to exercise a high level of, well, wait a minute, that's ten cents we need to have. And it's not just storing that blue police car out there. The deputy, the sheriff's deputies who effectively are a city resource. You use the fire department for rests, for breaks, for bathroom breaks and so on and so forth. As do the state police. Some of these guys come in there in the middle of the night, wake up firemen, all the rest of it. All I'm saying is be conscious that in this intergovernmental deal, there, I, I hesitate to use the term one hand watches the other, but there is an element of that. And I would simply ask that some weight be given by your group to understanding that the Fire District serves Sagittak residents as well as the other two jurisdictions residents. And if anyone merits a favorable relationship on transfer merchandise, transfer of equipment or whatever, between one government and the next, I would submit that the Fire Department as well as Cal Lake probably merit that. Okay, I'm finished. I'm done. Dan Fox, City of Sagittak, talks too much.
Thank you, Dan. I don't see any other hands raised. Kirk, you?
I am not seeing any other hands. If anybody has, um, on the cell phone or a regular phone, if they do star nine, they could.
I see Chris Mantle's raising his hand.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Chris Mantle's both the deputy chief of the Fire District and both a resident of the township. Um, just wanted to thank the council for the continued support in this boat dock adventure. Um, we are, uh, prepared. We're waiting for the final approval on Monday to pull the trigger on actually ordering the dock. And even at that point, um, it'll arrive right around Memorial Day, uh, and to be getting installed hopefully after this COVID pandemic is ending. So we'll be prepared for the, the summer season as well. Uh, so thanks again for, uh, working with us through this process. It's been, uh, uh, arduous, but we'll, we'll get there together. Uh, and then secondly, I'd just like to thank Garnet, the Rotary Club and her entourage, uh, for the campaign to raise funds, uh, to support not only local businesses, but uh, also the, the first responders and us that they provided us with quite a few gift cards. Uh, and it's just, you know, yes, we are here and we are the essential workers during this time, but uh, we, we feel the love of the community because of things like this and, uh, we greatly appreciate all of your support. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And, and we appreciate the extra miles that you guys went to get us information and, and as part of this process, you're very valuable, helpful. Any other, uh, uh, public comment?
Mr. Mayor, it's Greg.
Yes.
Yeah, so I certainly, um, we're very grateful for the relationship we have. Um, it's really a stellar relationship. And we value that. The city does so much for us. And it really goes, um, a long way when you can work together and create improvements and, and enhance the level of service. We could not do that without Sagittak City. You've got great leadership all across the board. And I certainly echo Chris Mantle's comments. Thank you for everything. Garnet, thank you for all the gift cards. The guys are drooling at the thought of what they can get out of those gift cards. So our appreciation. Um, again, I cannot stress we're so grateful for Sagittak City and their leadership and we are here to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Alright, let's move to council comments. Uh, anybody want to volunteer?
I do.
Chris?
Chris, yes. I have two points to make. First, again, thank you to our, our first responders and everybody that has, is kind of being there, picking up a lot of the, the pieces that we're not able to do as citizens. And it's, it's, we feel comfortable and confident in your service. Uh, to the chief, I'd say you have two very committed fire board members and they, they certainly, uh, talked about how they felt. For me, it's not that, um, I don't want you to have the dock, it's the process. And if we want to take that money then after we get it and turn it back over to you, I have no problem with that. I just think we need to keep the process clean.
Greg? Okay, uh, any other council comment? Cali? I'm sorry, Holly.
Uh, to Greg and Chris, uh, I'm just, I just want to check in on your safety. Um, Detroit, which is where I'm from, is, uh, our first responders are so hard-hit. Um, my chief of police in the town that I grew up in has been in, in ICU for two weeks. I know Detroit just lost a fireman, a fire chief today. And it's just devastating. So I'm really concerned about you guys and I'm just wondering what you have in terms of gear, in terms of PPE, in terms of decant, decontamination? Or if you could just address that a little bit, I would sleep better tonight.
Thank you for that, Holly. Um, it means a lot to us. This is a very unusual time. In the 20 years I've been in the fire service, the preparation and coordination is, um, has been overwhelming. While calls are down, it certainly has changed the way we do business. Our concerns at this time are bringing the virus home to our families. We've been fortunate with people dropping off masks, sanitizers. People have opened up stores, have donated gallons of sanitizers. So we are in better shape than some. But when we start responding to positive COVID cases, we're gonna go start eating through that inventory. And as we all know, N95 masks are such an extreme shortage. So we're very careful on how we treat this PPE. But we, as Chris said, we feel the support of the community and really that drives you. So many of the paid-in calls could certainly go home. Never do any of this. We have everyone willing to serve. Again, our big concern is not taking the virus home. So learning how to deal with this, we did health screens. We started that four weeks ago. We got kind of headed to the curb. But, um, it's on our minds heavily and it doesn't leave a lot of room in your mind to focus on other things, projects. So that being said, we're very grateful to the community. Holly, thank you for the kind words.
We're thinking about you.
Other council comments? Hearing no, none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, which we will vote on by roll call. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Move Garnet, second by?
Peterson.
Peterson? Please take the role. Monica?
Uh, Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Her Plank?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes. And so thank you for everybody, everybody for your participation this afternoon. Um, it was a good meeting. I guess we're learning how to use this technology along the way. So I'll do better Monday. But, uh, thank you all for the, your participation.
Good job, Kirk.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, Kirk orchestrated this and it was a masterful job.
Yeah, thanks Kirk. I know you've done a lot to put this together and it's taken a lot of your time. So thank you.
Welcome.
And I want to work on my backdrop.
I know you have a paper towel though, so that's.
Are you in an inferno there? What is that behind you?
It does look like it, yeah. Yeah. Very good.
Alright, thanks, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye. Be safe, everybody. Be well.
Yep.
Yep.